Have nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock?
Seven o'clock, nine o'clock. Nineteen hundred.
Nine o'clock.
Uh, all this, special media board of all and his order, roll call please.
Alderman Gorman?
Here.
Alderman Hudson?
Present.
Alderman Lee?
Here.
Alderman Madley? Alderman Rogers?
Here.
Alderman Wilkins?
Present.
Alright, we have a form this evening, which can't take place. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the law. To the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Thank you. All right.
Yeah, I think so.
Let's open the floor for comments from citizens. If citizens want to make any comments. Carry them and close that. Action Agenda. Legal is authorizing the mayor of City of Central Missouri to execute a long-term lease agreement with Kingdom Technologies Corporation. Doing business as fiber, a Phoenix Fiber of Avos, Missouri. For permission to occupy a portion of land at the corner of Adams Street and Lakeview Street owned by the city of Central Missouri. So ordinance requires two readings. We have Renee Reader, her husband and now it's today. Uh, we've been talking about this for quite some time. And we're down to, uh, a couple of things in here that we probably need to address.
Speed of the high, what is the speed limit?
Um, one hundred, one hundred repeated minimum.
Okay. We'll change that.
Which is what? Yearism of speed, isn't it?
That's the way. And then, um, in that same paragraph at the end, it says, "When off high, it should fit in county."
Have the D looking big, you draw. It should be four, we gotta clear both corners out.
Okay.
Should be both four. Now, we'll.
Four on nine.
Thank you. See anything else in there, do you see my five or change?
No.
Alderman Wilkins, would you introduce us, please?
Uh, sure, Bill Wilkins, please.
Two two four four.
And move that bill number two two four four be given its first reading by title only.
Motion second to bill number, what was that?
Two two four.
Two two four four be given its first reading by title only, all those who favor say aye. Aye, opposed, continue please.
And ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor of the city of Centralia, Missouri to execute a long-term lease agreement with Kingdom Telecommunications Inc. Doing business as fiber, a Phoenix Fiber of Avos, Missouri. For permission to occupy a portion of land at the corner of Adams Street and Lakeview Street owned by the city of Centralia, Missouri. Move that bill number two two four four be given its second reading by title only.
Second. I have motion second to bill number two two four four be given its second reading by title only, all those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, continue please.
And ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor of the city of Centralia, Missouri to execute a long-term lease agreement with Kingdom Telecommunications Inc. Doing business as Phoenix Fiber of Avos, Missouri. For permission to occupy a portion of land at the corner of Adams Street and Lakeview Street owned by the city of Centralia, Missouri. I move that bill number two two four four be adopted by roll call vote.
Second. I have a motion as second to bill number twenty two forty four be adopted by roll call vote, all those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And just know that we're voting on this as.
As amended.
And before we do that, though, uh, the last page of Exhibit Eight says written meets and bounds description of the land space and rights and money. Says see attached, but there is nothing. Where is it supposed to be?
It is inside the fenced area that's there with the water tower. We kind of had utility crews out there, looked at the area. We, we were working together to try to figure out the best place that it would actually go within that area. So it'll, it will be within the fenced in area for the water tower, where the water tower is currently.
No, we have no description. We're approving something without a description. It's, uh, was it twelve hundred square feet?
Yeah, twelve hundred square feet.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, it will be a fenced in area inside your fence. Uh, where inside that fence is totally up to you. Um, it, we will have about a six-foot fence. It will be a thirty by forty-foot lot. It will gravel everything inside the fence and there will be a twelve by twenty-four-foot, uh, central office building. Those prefab brown concrete looking prefab buildings, I'm sure you've got somebody.
Right, yeah. I don't object to that, I just think there ought to be something in here. And even something that says, uh, "To be determined by the city," uh, as you guys disputefully agreeable, uh, would be fine with me. I just think leaving it blank is not the right thing to do.
Typically what happens, the city will have to approve our site build to give us a permit to build. And we have that engineered based on where it's at and we will give you drawings and that type of thing. And then you authorize the permit to build it in that scenario.
Well, I would like to see this amended so that we put language in there that says, uh, location to be determined, uh, disputefully satisfactory to the city and, uh, I. I, I see what you're saying, but if we're trying to get this thing passed. Well, I realize that, we can add that language in right now. Yeah. I just think that language ought to be in there because otherwise it's, I mean, there's nothing.
What, the northeast corner? Something like that?
Um, it'll probably be the south.
Southeast corner?
East, southeast corner is what we're thinking. Um, we've had the utility crews out there. Um, I mean, that's kind of what we, what we want to get together with them and.
Is that, is that the corner by the drive entrance?
Uh-huh.
Yeah.
That's what we had discussed previously in the past few months.
But we, we can amend our motion so that we add in that language that it is something that's mutually satisfactory, okay.
Yeah, I can add that.
I just, I think leaving it blank is not the right thing to do. Right. There is a dis, somewhat a description on the, section one of the premises. However, I feel like there's an error in it because it says, um, located approximately two hundred and thirty-five feet west of the corner of Eden's Lane and Adams Street. I don't know where Eden's Lane is, I'm sure that's supposed to be Lakeview.
E, Lakeview used to be Eden's Lane. It's Eden on the other side of the highway.
Yeah, it's like gravel road.
I would suggest we probably ought to have let that to Lakeview so that we know where we're talking about.
What page is that on?
That's one of the ones.
And that address was given by your city attorney.
No, that's.
Sixth line of section one.
Yeah. Okay. Alright.
How do we amend this? We're going to prove that. We're up to four or five amendments.
You know one paragraph.
They're all in the one paragraph.
Yeah.
And then the Exhibit A or like there.
The Exhibit A was intended to be the building permit approval design and until we get a specific site, it's kind of hard to do that. But that's whatever you guys want is, will, will do.
I mean, I realize this has been going on and, and I have no objection to approving it tonight, I just want to see the right things in here. Yeah. I don't really want you to have to come back. But I think we can make some amendments and we can fix, uh, fix this.
Or something in there Exhibit A saying, uh, has approved for a building permit and that. Uh, trying to find a way to move forward because I agree that the way it's written right now, we should approve it. But then that is defined by building permit, without a word.
Well, I would just say location, uh, as determined, as mutually determined.
I, I said location to be determined that's mutually satisfactory.
That's, that would be fine.
So the amend, uh, the amendment would be Page one, paragraph number one. We're going to change the high speed from ten one to a hundred and hundred. We'll change Eden's Lane to Lakeview Street. We'll change deed to page oh four nine to four oh nine. And we'll change Randolph to Boone County. Okay. And then Exhibit A would be to change, uh, just to add the verbiage, just the location to be determined that's mutually satisfactory.
Okay. Alright. Everybody agree with that? So I have a motion and a second to, uh, four, bill number twenty two forty four be adopted by roll call vote. Always in favor say aye.
Aye.
Roll call vote please.
Alderman Gorman?
Yes.
Alderman Hudson?
Yes.
Alderman Lee?
Yes.
Alderman Madley? Alderman Rogers?
Four.
Alderman Wilkins?
Four.
Alright, by your vote, bill number twenty two forty four passes now becomes ordinance number.
Two nine seven eight.
Number two, fixing the compensation of certain employees in the city of Central Missouri. Ordinance requires two reads.
I don't know if we need to maybe move this. Not necessarily ideal, but move it to underneath the appointments.
Okay. You can, you can do that.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much for coming.
I'll get that taken care of.
Yeah.
How does that change the bill number?
That will change the.
Order.
It'll change your order of numbers if we give it. And that, that would be up to you.
Um, I think we can do that. Okay, tell me if you're free to go back to that. Alright, number three, authorizing the mayor to file an application with Missouri DNR for state revolving funds or loans under Missouri City Credit Water Loss. This is a resolution. Requires one reading.
This is just allowing us to apply for state revolving funds, but this is for the water plant renovation. Uh, this is the, the sewer's treatment, the, the land application stuff. This is the water.
Alderman Hudson, would you introduce us, please?
Bill number?
Two two four six. That's two two four five.
Two two four five.
Move that bill number two two four five be given its only reading by title only. Second.
I have motion second to bill number twenty two forty five be given its only reading by title only, all those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, continue please.
A resolution authorizing the mayor of the city of Centralia, Missouri to file an application with the Missouri Department of Natural Resources. State revolving fund program for loans under Missouri's Safe Drink and Water Loss, Section six four zero, RSMO. Move that bill number two two four five be adopted by roll call vote. Second.
I have, uh, I don't know why. Do we have a forum?
He's out there talking.
I apologize, I can't keep my side here, I don't know. We can't go in the van a few, we would not.
Oh, no, no, you might be the soul of your.
I'm like, I'm gonna have a meeting with him here in a minute.
Give him a meeting here. Alright. So the, I have motion second to adopt bill number twenty two forty five by roll call vote, all those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote, roll call vote again.
Alderman Lee?
Yes.
Alderman Hudson?
Yes.
Alderman Wilkins?
Four.
Alderman Gorman?
Yes.
Alderman Rogers?
Four.
Alright, bill number twenty two forty four passes now becomes fourth, uh, resolution number.
It's the resolution. R dash one eight dash zero five.
Alright, we, uh, put the number two down under appointments.
It just makes sense to do a appointment.
So, finance. Approving certification of payment number two from Energy Solutions Professionals LLC. With our energy savings project.
Long-term agreement, right? So move. Will we approve the payment for one six six two eight eight point five, sorry?
Second. I have motion second to approve the payment number two for Energy Solutions Professionals LLC. Amount of one hundred and sixty-six thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars and fifty-eight cents, all those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright.
How many more do we have?
About payments?
Yes.
Probably one more, they're still working on some streetlights that, um, we're not looking correctly. So we won't pay the very last one until I think that we're satisfied.
Yeah. Yeah, I noticed, uh, several streetlights were not working.
Right.
And yesterday afternoon about, I don't know, about clock or so, all the streetlights around the city were on.
It was like. Do we have a timer?
Probably bright after.
No, we changed it, I had this morning, I didn't shut off this morning.
That's what I thought, just talk about somebody else. Okay, we got a need. Yeah. Alright. Number thirteen. Approving the vested for garage doors for the fire department.
Um, this is not something that we brought up for, it's something that's come up with the last couple of weeks. Um, Denny brought, I mean, one quote, we asked him to make another one because it was so expensive. The garage doors have seized up on the fire department, so they're not even able to get the fire trucks out, um, without somebody coming and actually pushing the doors up for them. So it is something that we need to fix. And, um, his recommendation would be to go with Rowan Overhead Door Company. They are local and they have been, uh, Boone Rowan has been coming and actually opening those doors for them when they need to get the engine out. Uh, free of charge, hasn't charged them anything for that. So, um, his recommendation would be to go that it's a seven hundred, seven hundred and eighty-dollar difference, but.
We've done that before, we've done that in the past.
Right.
He would service and get, I mean.
That's okay, that's what he goes, so. This would require a motion.
This is something we can use that, uh, money from that gift we were given.
I think that it has to be used for equipment, so we're gonna have to find us one somehow.
That's it. I mean, the garage doors equipment, we have a motor to open it up.
Yeah.
I make a motion, I make a motion we approve the, uh, order from Rowan in the amount of ten thousand five hundred dollars.
Second.
I have motion second to approve the bid from Rowan in the amount of ten thousand five hundred dollars, all those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Alright.
Still, I guess we could use that much. Don't hold that place of girders, but.
We can, we can find out.
If it falls into that category, it would be nice. If not.
Yep, okay. Hold the business. Request from Robert Wright to hang a banner for the pumpkin festival.
So you've seen this before. Um, we, I talked to Robert, he came in, I asked him if he would be able to have the bottom of the banner at least fifteen feet high. He measured, he talked to, uh, Rob and Kaden and yes, they could get it that high. He talked to NFA, uh, they had no equipment that would even be that high. But, um, I know that Robert talked to.
Fifteen would be an extreme case for my bar, empty trucks coming through raised at the fullest height that normally doesn't travel down that path.
Right. So it would be an extreme case.
An exception.
So he could get it fifteen feet high if you all would approve that. Uh, once, upon approval, he would provide the proof of insurance, which he already has insurance, it just would be going and naming us as an additional insurance.
Who's Robert Peyton?
Rob Peyton. He owns JJ's.
JJ's, RNS, all sales.
JJ's is moved across the street from where they work. Yeah.
Do they need to check with the owner of the building where JJ's used to be?
It's Rob. It's not Rob?
No.
Who is it? He, he talked, he said he talked to somebody that.
Dennis.
Okay, he said he talked to somebody that, um, whoever, uh, he's talked to both people that own it, I guess I didn't know that it was Rob. He has, said he has talked to both people and has permission. That you'd want written permission from all of the other people.
I would suspect that therefore you objected, they see it hanging from their building without permission.
I would say so.
I'm not sure if you need that. Yeah.
Assuming he has permission. I believe that we allow him to. Second.
I have motion second to allow Robert Wright to hang the banner, all those who favor say aye. Do we want to leave it at thirteen six or do we want to take it to fifteen?
I thought you were doing fifteen.
Fifteen. But that's not.
The memorandum says something different. Well, the memorandum is original, my man.
That's the original, my man, but he didn't say fifteen, so if you want to make a motion that he can release.
Fifteen.
Alright, I have motion second to, uh, we will allow, right? Hang a banner fifteen feet for the pumpkin festival, all those who favor say aye. Alright, thank you very much. New business, appointments.
Do they appoint it first?
Huh?
Do they appoint it first? You pick.
Promoting Amy May, is that right?
Thank you.
Did I say that right?
Yeah.
Promoting Amy, Amy Mayner from customer service representative to assistant city clerk one.
Um, Amy's been with the city for almost two years. Um, she worked part-time. Um, in the interim, she'd go in full-time, she's been to meetings, she takes minutes, she catches on quickly. It would just be, I think it's a fitting promotion to promote her to at least be the city clerk one, um, at this point in time. It would be an increase in pay for her and we value her service.
You should remember who I am.
She's gonna, she has flash cards now with names on them, so remember.
With our pictures.
There's so many red ones she has.
I have motion second to promote Amy Mayner.
Thank you all very much.
To assistant city clerk one. All those who favor say aye.
That's true.
I have that.
Hold the call.
All of the favors say aye.
Aye.
Those questionable.
And that was.
Opposed, no. Thanks.
And that was the reason that we needed to change that ordinance to this because it does require the ordinance to increase her pay.
Okay.
Don't like how it's good for Don.
Alright, now let's go back up to number two, fixing compensation of certain city employees. This is the ordinance requires two reads.
Page six one.
Page fifteen.
Now, this ordinance includes several different parts. Section one, we have, we're setting salary for the police chief and that is effective on his first full day of employment. Um, he is here now, he's just kind of working part-time, but September third is his first full day of, first day of full-time. So his would be, um, effective then. Now, in our city code, we, um, allow some step increases whenever an employee's reached certain certification levels. So, Cuddy Rickless and Aaron Grayer both passed their tests for, I don't remember exactly.
Distribution.
Okay, water, distribution. Um, and so they are entitled to this step increase as well. And then Amy Mayner, um, increased.
Alright, this is the ordinance requires two reads. Alderman, anyone to introduce us, please? Form please.
I think it's two two four six.
I move that bill number two two four six be given its first reading by title only.
Second.
I have a motion second to bill number twenty two forty six be given its first reading by title only, all those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, continue please. An ordinance to fix the compensation of certain employees of the city of Central Missouri. I move that bill number two two four six be given its second reading by title only.
Second.
I have motion second to bill number twenty two forty six be given its second reading by title only, all those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, continue please. An ordinance to fix the compensation of certain employees of the city of Central Missouri. I move that bill number two two four six be adopted by roll call vote.
Second.
I have motion second to bill number twenty two forty six be adopted by roll call vote, all those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, roll call vote please.
Alderman Lee?
Yes.
Alderman Hudson?
Yes.
Alderman Wilkins?
Four.
Alderman Gorman?
Yes.
Alderman Rogers?
Four.
Alright, by your vote, the number twenty two forty six passes now becomes ordinance number.
Two nine seven nine.
Turn up your pace, I'm ready.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Good job. Alright, moving back down to new business, being permitting the use of a truck from Ford Chevrolet for the police chief.
This is the same truck that, this is the same truck that we gave back to Forrest, uh, when Larry Dedden left. We didn't have a need for it at the time. Uh, Bill, uh, Brad Forrest said at the time we took it back that if we found, we still needed a need for it, he would offer a Ford three to the Centralia Police Department, to the police chief to drive. Um, and Bob has indicated that he would like to drive that truck and all we have to do is carry the insurance on it, um, so.
Had we, or had we stopped paying?
Yes, we, we had canceled the insurance now, so we just added that on.
Okay, and how long does that go for?
I think we had just, this was.
Good reason.
So about another eighteen months, maybe.
Okay. Alright.
So.
Second.
I have motion another time for seconds. Uh, for approving the truck from Ford Chevrolet for the police chief, all those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Chief and the truck. Alright. Another session. Alderman Gorman, would you read the, read us in a closed session, please?
Sure. I make a motion that, uh, we go in closed session as provided under section six ten point oh two one, uh, three of the revised sections. Missouri for hiring, firing, discipline, or following of particular employees by a public governmental body.
Second.
I have motion second to go in closed session, roll call vote please.
Alderman Lee?
Yes.
Alderman Hudson?
Yes.
Alderman Wilkins?
Four.
Alderman Gorman?
Yes.
Alderman Rogers?
Four.
I'm Mike Forrest, I'm, you know, work strict for everything.
Me too.
Did we get to interview? Is that any kind of a board? Nice. You doing any really guys? You do, you want to blame yourself?
I don't have the feeling.
Blue shirt, this Jeff Armtrout, he's a black and white one, uh, and green shirt is Matt Rush.
I'm here, this is you, here.
Living show.
Thirteen.
Thirteen, lucky thirteen. Matthew Rush, nice to meet you.
He'll get sick of seeing all of us, probably. James, everybody, my goodness, and the boy, he's here all the time. I'm doing good, aren't you? I'll keep tracking you these, huh? Calling the drives.
So when we go pick that truck that's muddy?
Oh, I want to do that. You ready for that?
Oh, we put way further in there.
It costs too much.
We put one buddy, bring me forty one one time and then he took the drive shaft and backed the truck. Back to dealer's side.
Does anyone want to go off?
Literally, I kind of raced when I was shopping today, picked up a few more things, I don't know how she did it right now. It's cool.
Everything right now, then? When is she ready?
Uh, Wednesday, Thursday.
Monday?
She's okay right now, we'll see.
You're great. You're old.
Yep.
What is that? She, um, she's looking at the rock after washing after she gets done. I think she's gonna do the missing math. She's going to the home.
See, see, that's what Kaden, she's having, I was doing.
Yeah.
She's going, I said, I can do it for two years and then she must go down to, I mean, go to college, she must.
She's gonna, so I can do it for two years and then she wants to go down to, come to college, she wants to. That's where. Oh, no, she's going into physics, so. She wants to do research, I was sure she raised the chance, so.
Well, because he wears that front.
So, we'll probably, we'll probably go watch football the long, so.
Yeah.
Go watch anybody.
That'd be kinda neat.
He was.
She wouldn't have been good at first, and she's just.
I'll make sure to have fun because soon as the baby's always. Several of her kids that graduated last year out there, so she's got some friends already.
Allison, I'm just, and then I can remember a year or two back when I went up there for orientation, they, they stuck him with kids.
So, she got to hang out with some kids all day, they're gonna be her form, so she needs some friends there. So she was, after that day, she was ready to go.
She ready.
That kinda made things a little easier that day, so, yeah, she's, she's ready. Yeah. Yeah, she's, she's pretty excited, ready to go, so. Just gotta get all her stuff packed, so we'll be doing that Tuesday night.
Morgan would be this, well, this is the last one.
She just got back from more than ten church and they left, they took a break a few, uh, they got back this Friday night, so it's Saturday before. By the morning, she was so happy. This is like the fourth, maybe the fifth one she's been on. This is old hat, just grab stuff and go. Yeah, it was, uh, this was a week of hope one, so they, it was more volunteers, this is.
Yeah, that's true.
They just traveled away and like. The last week, I could like, look at through banks, nursing homes, just volunteering, helping out, working at all, they're grouped up and they go to houses and paint.
Warm things, get a coffee.
I'm not sure all they were doing this one, can't remember what she said now. They had a good time. Ten hour drive. The, the way out, they broke it up, the way back, they just.
That's not bad, it's about first mission that I went with this one, because we drove through a screen.
Seventeen hours, like. No. On the way back, I'm great, come on. I'm like, I'm, I'm listening to help my house.
Last year we went on, um, a short vacation.
I was sending the bell.
We'll go then. And, uh, it's like seventeen hours, it's somewhere, very west side of Texas. Take the table to get to Texas, it takes two days to go across it.
To get there, yeah.
And, uh, yeah, we broke it up, that's a long trip. Eight or ten hours in cars, very killer, but we got stopped. That's, it's where, uh, up in Wisconsin, where Nashville White Hill, it says up there, my state rep, he was up to. Just come out and visit you guys. I said, I said, do they get snow out there, I was, we don't think it's time, but it's still there still. He was talking to the national brothers up there, I forget how much snow they had on the ground, it was like eight.
Life turns to shut down.
Ten forty six. And we had that for a while. Too big shade. It was, I think it was like two thousand eleven, we got that eighteen inches or something, that's the last big one that I did. Jake. No, that's not bad. No.
That was amazing.
It's a start.
I mean, it's all right, but we can get off that effect. So trying to dig them out, all along.
It's not like that, no, sometimes people think they're gonna get their little car down to six inches, but. I don't want, I don't want somebody's gonna be climbing under because. Most cars on the center. We just ride contract. Yeah, it's kind of funny to watch. We're, we're due here pretty soon, we just put, well, I've been through there, so it's been pretty rough.
I was really thinking we could.
No, yeah, I did too. So we're gonna get on that shit, it's not gonna forget her turn, there's one whole thing. Little ice in that stupid ass snow there. And I was in Texas, so I didn't care. I was like, guys, hey, you guys, you guys, don't worry about it. That was, that was a freak, that was crazy. I need something, I don't know what I need.
Does he check the repeater?
It was sort of.
Didn't you have somebody, did you ever talk to the.
He is in Vegas today.
I'm like, that's not that far.
We're going back to the old church tomorrow, he's got her driver's license, and he was made.
Somebody freed up.
Maybe look at that, or.
The one that was hit by a heavy.
How was it when they're fighting? I usually thought I was taking me by anywhere, but she. Doesn't work when they're fighting. Who's the key fucking?
Who's the?
So, Morgan bought a car. I think I look at you at work. Congratulations, they should go.
What you have there if you have, if you have a drawer for them up there? I don't want some, I have those.
I wasn't sure, I asked people now.
You ready, you ready, before somebody, while we got dorms, we got all the action now in the truck, and you're doing the major side.
Is the antenna outside or inside?
It's a big truck on top of that counter next door.
Well, I can't, I can't complain, I mean, they gave them rental from the.
You can't hear nothing.
And this last time she.
You might be able to talk, but you can't hear it. Oh, wow.
So.
Well, we got a lot of your.
Forty was turned.
Done with the ambulance, so.
Yeah.
With smaller cars, so, shoot down. Nice, twenty seventeen, when I was up there, when I turned and talked to tape.
We're gonna tear those musical reg, you know, you're trading.
Not under traffic, so.
She wants some small.
Might want to be.
I might say something I shouldn't say.
I don't know. Nope, not up in there, not up in there. You just don't squeeze that thing everywhere.
Yeah, I mean, nothing else, I mean.
Yeah, it's, it's a nice little truck, like.
You got some four of those sitting there on the.
It wasn't bad, I just like. Sitting there to give them example, and you can't, they cancel each other out. So, except one little beam about like that, comes back, kind of, pop out. Place away, I guess, I have to get off this, and I, yeah, I don't know, so, yeah, it's, it's really nice. They have a fire department, so we got their equipment.
It's old.
I had the.
Oh, yeah, that's right, yeah.
Do some ways in the forest.
Especially.
We, I didn't, we discussed that, actually, they.
Some have to go out, so the dab lines are some over there, the whole bugbear stuff with. They had a. Send my money, it's almost the same amount. But, she's like, I, whatever, we each got a board, and we don't really, we're, we're, we're just making this a little more storage or something.
A new one, a new, um.
Is it, um, section number?
Yeah, they, they do like.
I don't know. The hand held.
Six, they might. Two hours. But it's got a little bit in the back of, you never bells, I suppose.
It's not too bad when you're. Works in the same general area around the coast, I don't know, I'm, clear the lowest drive and there.
You should be able to talk from portable mobile with no problems, uh, especially here in town.
Whatever, I think.
It almost sounds like.
Oh, yeah.
It's more than equal, not just a little correlation. Better off, Facebook, it's on there, you know, so to me, that's. Yeah, my trolling. Check it out.
You should be able to hear anywhere.
Pretty well. We work.
I said, we changed the radio, we had another one, I don't know, I'm not saying it was.
I mean, it's really.
We replaced his parents. Then the drawers are saying.
He had the dead doors to wait, mom didn't run, so just that dress.
It's like, it's that crazy.
She was, it's right up front, she was like, but I, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't like. Alright, let me figure what you want. Then move the look.
I'll just press the radio, so.
The ones that are trucks, or.
You might not wanna drive, because they're gonna be, like, just four of them, but.
And one.
Right, Gina likes those.
Spoiler alert, so.
Those wires showing.
He had one out, it's up there, big white tail. They're just two door, but. Everything, that's just so brainy, they've done everything to it, like, I've got to drive around inside there. He says mom had one. Little delicious four line. It, it, it just doesn't look like one should.
I'm telling you, I think it's. I don't think it's.
Cause he said they were, they were a little while near the fire station, it was at ninety-five degrees.
So, seen each other?
That's how you do it anyway? Yeah, we have one big orange truck, and she's got that little mark in that here, she likes that a little issue. I said, look, yeah, I said.
Oh, under ten minutes.
Well, it's supposed to get there in ten minutes.
We shall see.
Those are those forks or something, do you?
That's how I texted from behind.
What color do you? Little bit.
Yeah.
She's giving access to you there.
I'm failing.
The.
At the meeting, it started, ninety-five degrees, and by the time they elected, it was eighty-four.
I didn't recognize anyone in the nineties. They, they're really nice, but they just don't, don't follow it yet. And, I mean, always could be new as well, and also.
Snow all the way back.
That will come back.
Alright, so, do you have a question to make then? We are back in open session, in closed session, we have a couple of discussions, and. Make a motion, yes, sir?
I'm just.
Oh, sorry. Someone needs to make a motion to hire our city clerk.
I'll make a motion that we hire Tara, what's her last name?
Trey. I'm, uh, motion is second to hire Tara Strain and our city clerk. Roll call vote please.
Alderman Lee.
Yes.
Alderman Hudson.
Yes.
Alderman Wilkins.
Four.
Alderman Borman.
Yes.
Alderman Rogers.
Four.
Alright, welcome aboard.
This is Tara.
You could stand and introduce yourselves.
There's no, no, no speech required, you can just introduce yourself.
Okay, I'm Tara Strain, I've lived in Centaria for, right about eight years, a little over eight years. Um, I've got three kids that have gone through the school system. And, that's basically, I come from Boone County, I've been in Boone County for almost eight years, the sheriff's department as their warrant supervisor. I'm really excited to come on board.
We're excited, yeah, we're excited.
Alright.
So, make a motion that we, uh, receive with all the contacts that we make to legal services.
Second. I have a motion second.
Let's just do one.
Okay, roll call vote please.
Alderman Lee.
Yes.
Alderman Hudson.
Yes.
Alderman Wilkins.
Four.
Alderman Borman.
Yes.
Alderman Rogers.
Four.
No. Yeah.
That's right.
Player vote, uh, the motion passes.
You give the.
Right, it's not the general, roll for there. Alright, motion passes and, uh.
We will have something drafted and ready for the August twentieth.
Alright, speaking of August twentieth, I will not be here that. That, uh, military duty from the nineteenth of August till the first of September, so hopefully that's.
How long is the contract with this name field?
It, it's not so much as a contract as a legal services.
We're not.
Legal services. Will it be a contract or will be, I don't know. I don't know.
It'll, it'll be something.
I expect it to be.
I guess it's likely to be a contract.
It'll probably be a contract. Okay. All right. All right. All right. As we arise. As we arise.
I make a motion major. Go ahead.
Uh, motion second major, all of the papers attached. All right, opposed. You do major? All right, now the real thing, now the work begins. Uh, we just need to need a break. Attendance hasn't changed, we sent the pledge of allegiance. Comments from citizens? Still no?
It's hard outside.
It's hard.
Come here.
All right, item four, public works. You have an activity report, Bill, and can you want to highlight on that?
I'd say the big thing is, uh, a lot of street patching we've been doing. Been trying to do a lot of street repairs this month and we're still working on.
Street, um, Switzerland was patched and completed, done satisfactory to you. Anybody else have any questions or comments about the street department's activity report? Item B, update on the Randolph Road project.
Um, we had a design meeting, um, on July twenty-fifth here with the S and S. Uh, Mike Corsey, Matt, Jeff, and Bill, we're all in attendance. Um, just kind of talking about where utilities are, and things like that. So, they're starting to work on the design, we don't have anything definite, but just letting them know it is progressing. Did you all have anything to add?
Well, we just dove the, uh, soil sample holes Friday, so they did take it.
Moving on, anything for sanitation? Stormwater, update on May's Meadows project.
It's, uh, waiting on bids for, uh, next Wednesday.
That one in close?
This Wednesday.
This Wednesday, sorry.
Two, two days.
Yes, this Wednesday.
Ten AM here at City Hall.
Had several contractors have been calling and asking questions, and so hopefully we get some good bids on it.
Is that gonna be completed this year, hopefully?
Yes.
I know Stone will be happy.
Don't drive it. Nice speed by.
I'm not going.
I believe it had.
They say if it's not, let us know, we will detour around that area.
It should be done, you know, before Christmas, I mean, it's, it's said to be all finished this, this fall.
We, um, also have bids closing, uh, at the same time for the asphalt overlay, they'll load North Allen Sunrise Circle.
Yes.
And May's Meadow. So, we, we did, we timed it all at the same time, so that, oh, that a contractor wanted to bid on both, that they could. Um, also, back to the Randolph Road, they did say that, um, they expect that to be done probably late summer, uh, of next year, twenty nineteen. Should be completed. Is that, isn't that, is that what he?
I think it's, it's.
Like July, August.
Going after bids like this winter and should be able to be completed by, yeah, next summer.
Any others in public works? Can we get the, the ball to go on the, uh, power lines?
Mm-hmm, they're on, they're installed, they're different.
For the, for the.
Three weeks ago, planned.
All right, thank you. Moving on to water and sewer department. There's an activity reporting in the package. Matt, hey, hey, you wanna highlight on that?
Could you just please stand up and make your presentation? This is Matt's first meeting as foreman.
Were you doing a dress code?
Yeah.
His tux is in the.
Yeah, the, the dry cleaner wasn't open, I guess.
Shouldn't he bring a car in for the inquisition?
I agree.
Um, no, um, nothing here, really, cause I need to.
We had another leak over there on Reed Street, just behind Reed Street. Which has been an issue, cause that's an odd sized main, and it's also one that's really hard to get shut down. We've had a leak there before, so we're kind of looking into that, we're gonna have to figure out a way to get that shut down a little bit better. That may be a spot. It's bigger than what our insert machine will do. So, we may have to move back a little bit and maybe do a couple. Cause I priced, we can do a couple for what I, or look to see, have somebody come in and do it. It's almost fifteen thousand for a A bout. Come in, we can do.
What is that?
It's trans, I, it's a rough, plus two hundred. And they just don't like the chance, they really want you to tap it, get the thickness, dig a hole, tap it, get the thickness, send that to them with no D measurement. And it's, and then it's two to three weeks for them to make the plant to fit. And then have them come and do it, well, we get to do, we can do two A's somewhere. Still be cheaper by about four or five thousand dollars for, for them to do, so. We'll have to figure that out, let's only do.
Any else have a question for the activity report?
The, uh, meter jar at two thirty-one, stop picking me? Did you replace that or what? Just getting old or something?
Oh, yeah, it, it got ran over.
Yeah.
And then, so we just ended up smashing the clay tile, I put a new plastic jar in and.
Oh, okay.
Regraded it out, so that the landlord did not hit it anymore.
All right, thanks. Any, uh, any further questions or comments? Anything for water? Anything for sewer?
Little blue sewer.
Just inspected a couple of new tabs for construction houses going up. Uh, opposite of one on the sorts of streets that are there, and then on Lake Street, were the only two that we had, so.
Thank you. Any others for water and sewer department? Thank you, Matt. Actuaries department. Activity report. Jeff, anything you'd like to highlight on this?
Oh, we're just getting started on. Fifth day, that we, out in Southwest Country. Got our poles on the ground this week. And we probably try to pull it all overhead wire in, just to make our loop be, we can, with that, last. Happy, man. Probably spend a lot of time out there, on the state drive.
Right.
We repaired some stuff at the, Centralia Golf and Social Club. Dump truck should have already been before you go, uh. Broke the pole off. And we set the pole, looked at all our stuff. Just things like that mostly.
Are they responsible for those repair parts? Any other questions or comments about the activity report?
Um, well, what about the activity report? I, I was being asked about the, the new meters, or we're low, I'm running low on the current meters that we use right now.
Well, I wouldn't say we're low.
Low.
But, we need to be, uh, something going on. Going to the AMI meters.
Right.
Because I'm, I can't get any more. Display boards, oil transporters for my three page meter, I haven't got any of those. We gotta, we'll go out, we just gotta go manually read it. And. And that was my, that was my last batch of display boards. But I've got about sixty, but. So, I mean, the building keeps going like it's going. We're going.
Yeah. Are we, uh, we, I guess, exploring the different options and all that stuff?
Yes. We've had one, we, we have another one, well, we haven't, we got it set up yet, the guy was buyer. Third. And, often we're mad about it. He's gonna come back at some point, we need to get back in touch with him, so, they, um, see if they're better.
All right. Well, thank you very much. We ready to move on? Mm-hmm. Uh, anything for generation and purchase?
We submitted our updated agreement with next Tara. Also, they're on there.
Distribution?
Uh, we had a tree that was you. On, on Saturday.
I think it was a Sunday.
The Sunday, yeah. I mean, E circuit was off for about. Hour, hour and a half. Tree limb broke, fell across the line, and it would let. Took the breaker to substation. Once we moved, brought the, uh, limb, everything was good to go.
That's good. Quote for a new trencher? That's in your package.
Um, just getting ready to start that job out there, and with the line between Denton and Sunset, Sunset Adams. Two runs through there that are kind of the plans to go underground. We're kind of looking at an idea of getting a back, uh, trencher. And we went through the NJPA bids. And these were the two that came back, it's the same one, one has the backhoe attachment on it. Ditch which is probably the most popular trencher out there. For me, it's possible, but there's a dealership in Hattie that has to actually go through Saint Louis to get the cars, and Saint Louis is slow with it. Mobley has a repair deal right there on sixty-three, right before we get in Mobley, it works on ditch which, and we had the trencher before. It worked, they did good work, no problem. So, I called down, got some bids, and talked to Heather as far as savings from the bigger Derek that they had. See if we could fit this in for this year. And with the backhoe attachment, which is the way we think we need to go. We can get a lot more versatility out of it, uses many, one job possibly and have the trencher going on another, or maybe even both, but. If he, wouldn't that be hauling too many pieces of equipment to the same job site that way? Um, bid come in sixty-nine thousand, seventy-one dollars and twenty-four cents. Well, if you look above that, there's that tax included on that, which they forgot to take off. I called and verified that amount, which is almost three thousand dollars, would come off that price. So, if you're good with that, this is kind of a way to be, how to build this. Millions, like I said, with the NJPA bids, so. It's a pretty simple process, actually, but we found the backhoe, the trencher, uh, skin loader, so.
We saved about eighty-six thousand dollars over, from budget on the Digger Derek truck. So, even if we purchased, purchased this, we'd still have twenty thousand dollars left in that account.
Look, I, I see the sixty-nine thousand, but if you go down further in there, there's another bid in there for, uh, fifty-two thousand, what's that for?
That's without the backhoe.
Without the backhoe.
Yeah, I just, I bid it both ways, but we were kind of debating a little bit, and price wise, plus versatility, it all could be better off. Make a trench and then turn around and dig for the transformer pads.
Right.
And do it all in one shot. So, the total bid would be sixty-six thousand, three hundred and thirty-three, eighty and eighty-eight cents.
Sixty-six, three fifty-three?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve the bid for sixty-six thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars?
I don't think we can actually approve it.
Oh, you don't want to approve it?
I think we could do it full board.
Okay.
But we can bring it back, we're honest.
You may not be informed of it, then.
I know. I was, I, I.
That's what, right?
Yeah.
Thank you for that.
I think it'd be a good piece to put, and make life a little easier on some of these target spots for Jeff.
Well, that and not to mention, I don't have a ton anymore.
Yeah, right.
I'm good. Compared with a new track though. Where you're digging everything, you don't leave that by a ditch. Or a two inch.
Is that all for electric department? I have something I want to bring up. Uh, I was talking to Jeff the other day, we were talking about, uh, Southwest Country States, and, uh, Jeff mentioned to me that, uh, the. Uh, city insurance guy had been in town, and that, uh, he went around and, uh, they were looking at some of the, uh, city, uh. More like transform, uh, or substations out there. And, uh, Jeff said that, uh, he looked at our new one, and he looked at our old one, and he made the comment at the old one, he says. This thing is twenty-seven years old, and he says, you need to start thinking about, uh, replacing this, because in thirty years, uh, that's about the life of these, uh, substations. And so, I asked him what the substation would, uh, replacement would cost, and he said about, what'd you say, one point six?
Well, like, you know.
Depends on what needs to be done.
I know what the new would cost, it was about one point five or six.
Okay.
Just for the transformer.
This is just like replacing parts or whatever?
I really don't know, I mean, I, there may be, you know, a little bit, but that'd be, but.
Oh, eight?
Yeah, no, I know.
Oh, eight or oh-nine, I know it's right in there.
I know that.
It was eleven before we went online.
But, um, we could only pay about fourteen thousand dollars a month on that lease payment for that substation.
So, something we can just start looking ahead and get ready for, and when it happens.
Well, and I'd be curious to ask some questions on. Hey, we just left this transformer off. But then it comes to, I mean, you don't have to have a portable sub. We can't feed off the whole town off of that other transformer.
You can't?
That's gonna happen.
Stitching cords?
Yeah.
Anyway, there's a rather substantial amount of money that we're going to have to, yeah, come up with in the next few years to pay for this. So, I'm kind of curious as to how much money we have in the reserve fund in the electric department, and maybe we kind of shouldn't have lowered the rates, maybe? I don't know.
Well, that was just, I mean, an opinion, but I mean, it's something we can. Maybe we want to get the water thing taken care of and then jump on this, you know?
Well, but we need to start planning for it.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, well, that's not bad.
And that's why I was kind of curious as to what, you know, how much money there is in the reserve fund, whether this is something. We're going to be able to take out of reserves, or whether we're going to have to go with a revenue bond for it, or what we're gonna have to do. We're gonna have to start making some decisions, and we start, better start planning for it.
We don't have one point five million in reserves.
Guess that'd be interesting. Talk to our, do we have an engineer for the electric department?
BHMB.
BHMB. Not that, not that the insurance man doesn't know what he's talking about, but he is an insurance. Well, I, and I realize that.
He's probably got a pretty good idea, though.
But, but my guess is he does know, uh, these kinds of things, he may not know what it's gonna cost for, and that's gonna be work. But, but I, we, we do need to start looking at this, and if we don't have enough in reserves, we either need to, uh. And if we don't have enough in reserves, we either need to raise the rates, or we're going to have to go out with a revenue bond for this, which will take a vote. There are gonna have to be some decisions made on how we handle this, and we don't know what we have to do with it.
If it hadn't been for the insurance guy, would we have known this? Or when would we have known this? When the lights went out?
You know, I, I really don't know, didn't know what the, and we were kinda talking about that over there, because I knew that one was twenty-seven years old. And he started talking, and he brought up the fact that thirty years is probably a pretty good number. Pretty good life.
This is, this is definitely something that we're gonna have to talk about, but we also need to look at this AMI system. Because they're running out of meters that are, that they're gonna be able to use. And we have to do something. The last quote that we got was almost half a million dollars for an AMI system. So, I feel that obviously we need to be looking at the tran, at the substation, but AMI's gonna end up being priority, I think. In the short term, but long term, we definitely need to be looking at that, so.
So, for our next meeting, we have what's in our reserves and an option or two.
Sure.
Then, because Don's right, I mean, if we can raise rates a little bit right now and start putting some money building in our reserves.
We got a three-year warning. So, that might be.
Yeah, three-year warning, plus with AMI.
It's gonna be five years.
I'm thinking we may have been given bad advice on reducing our rates, maybe we shouldn't do that.
Well, that's why I say it's better.
So, it'll be like a next year thing?
But I do think.
We need to start planning.
Yeah, I mean, we may wanna make a small change now in the rates and start building with some money after. Chances are, we may not cover the one point five plus another half a million dollars with it, but if we can come up with a good chunk out there.
The recommendation, the recommendation we had was to go down five percent, but we only went two and a half, right?
Right, we increased it five and we went down two and a half.
Well, Jeff, going, going LED is gonna help a little bit, doesn't it?
The fact that they don't work.
Two percent.
That's one way to save power, is turn it off.
Turn them all off.
Why don't you turn them on every other night?
Well, and that might, this might be something that maybe the MP or AIC could, you know?
Yeah.
You know? Cause there's gonna be a certain procedure, and there's gonna be certain medical issues.
Lots of white blood tonight, isn't it?
I, I'm guessing that with the guy talking about thirty years, that's kind of an average, and, you know, it could be more than that, could be less than that. We're gonna have to give them the air值to evaluate, and I'm sure.
Needless to say, for the electric department, we need two million dollars over the next couple of years, so, I mean, we need to look.
Will you, will you perform annual maintenance and periodic maintenance on it?
Well, I, I have oil tests done. They tested for methane and water, any kind of.
Right.
Something that shouldn't be there. And the last maintenance we had was on Burkhardt. And that was right after we got Wilson Street building.
That was a rather major one, wasn't it?
Yeah, the OTC had some gear broke off, and those guys were, a load tab came through, keep sure. Molding it.
Right.
Certain.
Yeah.
Molding. But that was in the wintertime, we, we ran the whole town off of Wilson Street. And we had two circuits coming out of Wilson Street.
Right.
But if we don't have any meters, then we don't need electricity, because they don't use.
Get some extension.
Yeah, yeah, they're right.
Maybe what we have in reserve and an estimate on how much one percent gives us, just so we have a, an idea, so we can play with the number.
Thank you for that. Item seven, report from director of public works.
Well, this is one week's worth of stuff, that's all I was here, but. Not to say that I didn't do anything that one week, but I felt like I did more than that, just today, coming back after being gone a week, so. I'm kinda feeling my way through some of this, as far as that fit, doing the setbacks and everything. The other apartment heads have been really good about helping out on stuff. Jeff's had to help out quite a bit with the electric, picking up stuff, and that's gonna be the area in probably the weakest zone. So, we're trying to work on that. Things looking down the road, they gave me a list on what they've got jobs coming forward, so I can kinda stay with them on that. And kinda work with the items that they're spending money on, to kinda see what we got going there, but. Day to day, I can see a lot of running back and forth, and, um, they have to get a bike, I'll be in pretty good shape, but I'm done with it. This is just some of the things we've done. There's gonna be a lot more coming with subdivision, as it's going, and stuff out there, we're getting more and stuff there. Don's out there today, and we've seen a couple of things that we're gonna have to do, and then try to stay, avoid conflict with utilities on another, so. Stuff I can kinda help, they were shorthanded on concrete, so I helped out there with traffic and full trousers, so. If I need help, I'll definitely do that.
In case anybody goes out to Columbia Street, uh, the sewer line on Columbia Street is being extended. And the storm sewer on Columbia Street is being installed, the rest of the storm sewer, the street itself is not going in at this point, but, uh, the storm sewer in the center.
So, that's a good start on business right there, just have that done.
Thank you, Mike. Any others? Any other as may arise?
Anybody else get a letter from Margie Penley, or an email? Okay, I got an email from her, it says, "I'm writing to make you aware, if you are not already, that trash and nuisance awareness is being violated at six oh nine South Problems. I've made several calls to the police department about this property, which is that store to me. Not sure what, if any pressure you can apply, but I sure like to see the violator gone. I'd say maybe clean up the place, but the problem is ongoing. Trash gets brought in, disposed of, and more trash appears. Washing machines have been used as a burn barrel in the driveway, and according to my husband, the object is sleeping in the garage behind the unsightly arrangement of sheets, curtains, etcetera." She's trying to keep this, our attention on this, so I assume it's just been before us before?
Okay, I do know a little bit about this one.
Okay.
She has called multiple times. Sandy is dealing with it. My understanding is the brother is working on the eviction to get him out. She has leave writ citations to Mr. Whistler. One bringing in the general. And she is correct about, it's pretty unsightly. I've been over there multiple times myself, so. It is being handled, but we don't move so fast. So, we're gonna have to rely on, uh, Jeremy, I believe, saying those.
You know, on the same note, I noticed that a lot of people are starting to take advantage of the trash again. And I'm sure Danes hadn't said a word, have they? You'll see four or five big items with the trash cans.
They're charged for each additional one.
Are they doing that?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, I guess.
Yeah, they, they, they keep a list, and if you've got one on one big item, they'll, they'll mark it down.
So, they're, they're.
They take pictures of them sometimes.
Okay, good, because I could see some big piles of stuff.
Household trash, bags of trash, there's no limit to that size.
No, I'm seeing like, big things.
Couches, chairs.
Yeah, yeah, I'm seeing the whole living room out there, and it used to be just one thing. I didn't know washing machines with burn barrels.
You, they, they, don't pick it all up, they'll just, they'll just get built for all of them, no one, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I've seen the Danes build four, and then it'll have the address, and it'll say.
Good.
Five extra bulky items, and they'll, and they'll charge them, and then we take that list and we charge the customer every month, so. People are getting charged for it.
Are, are people upset about it?
You're getting a lot of calls. Some are upset, they'll, they'll come in and say, "What is this beat on my bill?" And we'll be able to go in and call Danes, and they'll say, "You had a couch and a loveseat out, extra bulk." They're very specific. They, they, they list everything.
According to the state's insurance calendar.
Yeah.
Just a reminder, we have an election tomorrow.
Yes.
We also have National Night Out tomorrow. If anyone is out and about downtown, come to National Night Out.
Any other as may arise?
Oh, I will bring up one other thing. We did, I have, the Chamber of Commerce had its, had a wine mart on July twenty-eighth. Uh, we didn't do as well as what I hoped, but I think we did fairly well. We had a hundred and seventy-five people or so that attended on it. Uh, several of the vendors that I talked to, uh, the wineries, they said that we would probably about double that next year, I don't know. If we get over three hundred, I'd be extremely pleased next year. Uh, but, uh, all the businesses were very pleased with it, uh, the wineries were pleased with it. Uh, as far as I know, there were zero problems, uh, but everything was thrilled with the way it worked, uh, and it did seem to come off very smoothly. So, we're looking at, we've already scheduled the next one for next year. It will be the same weekend, last weekend in July.
Any other as may arise?
I did receive a call from Caleb Raine today, Joel. Did an interview with him about things happening in Centralia. But it's only an interview, so.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I have a motion? Anybody wanna say on that?
Second.
Second to adjourn, all of the favors staff.
If it is, we have it doing itself. Matt, can you just turn that up? You can come as well.
Came up and bought this.
Jeff? Jeff, Jeff, we get what we're talking about.
We're back in open session. In closed session, we had a couple of discussions, and. Make a motion? Yes, sir?
I'm just such a idiot, sir.
My glasses were on. Someone needs to make a motion to hire a city clerk.
I'll make a motion that we hire Tara, what's her last name? Tara.
Second.
I'm, motion is second to hire Sheriff Strain and our city clerk. Roll call, please.
Alderman Lee?
Yes.
Alderman Hudson?
Yes.
Alderman Wilkins?
Four.
Alderman Borman?
Yes.
Alderman Rogers?
Four.
All right. Welcome aboard.
This is Tara.
You could stand and introduce yourselves.
Speech, speech.
There's no, there's no speech required, but you can just introduce yourself.
Okay, I'm Tara Strain. I've lived in Centralia for, probably about eight years, a little over eight years. Um, I've got three kids who've gone through the school system. And that's basically, I come from Boone County, I've been in Boone County for almost eight years. The sheriff's department as their warrant supervisor. I'm really excited to come on board.
We're excited to, yeah, we're excited.
All right.
So, I make a motion that we, we receive with all the contacts that we make with legal services?
Second. I have a motion of second.
Let's just do one.
Okay, roll call, please.
Alderman Lee?
Yes.
Alderman Hudson?
Yes.
Alderman Wilkins?
Four.
Alderman Borman?
Yes.
Alderman Rogers?
Four.
No. PTA, great. That's right. Fire vote, uh, the motion passes?
You have to carry it, it's not for generating vote, there ain't.
All right, motion passes, and, uh.
We will have something drafted and ready for the August twenty.
All right, speaking of August twenty, I will have to hear that. That military duty from the nineteenth of August till the first of September, so it'll be out of town.
How long is the contract with this thing, Joel?
It, it's not so much as a contract as a legal services.
We don't have a contract, yeah.
Legal services.
Creating a contract.
Will it be a contract, or will it be? I don't know.
There'll be something. I guess it's like it'll be a contract.
Probably a contract. Okay. All right. All right. All right. As may arise. As may arise.
I make a motion to adjourn?
Go ahead. I have a motion second to adjourn, all of the favors staff. All right, post, need to adjourn? All right, now the little, now the work begins. Uh, I guess he needs a break. Penance hasn't changed, we sent the pledge of allegiance. Comments from the citizens? Still none?
It's hot outside.
It's hot outside.
Yeah.
All right, item four, public works. Do you have an activity report, Bill, and can you want to highlight on that?
I'd say the big thing is, uh, I watch street patching, we've been doing. Been trying to do a lot of street repairs this month, and we're still working on.
The street that on Switzer was patched and completed, and satisfactory to you. Any others have any questions or comments about the street department's activity report? Item B, update on the Randolph Road project.
Um, we had a design meeting, um, on July twenty-fifth here with the SNS, uh, Mike Corsey, Matt, Jeff, and Bill, who were all in attendance. Um, just kinda talking about where utilities are, and things like that. So, they're starting to work on the design, we don't have anything definite, but just like, you know, it is progressing. Did you all have anything to add?
Well, we just dug the soil sample holes Friday, so they did take the.
Moving on, anything for sanitation? Stormwater, update on May's Meadows project.
It's, uh, waiting on bids for next Wednesday.
And when it closes?
This Wednesday.
This Wednesday, sorry.
Two, two days.
Yeah, this Wednesday.
Ten AM here at City Hall.
Had several contractors have been calling and asking questions, and so hopefully we get some good bids on it.
Is that gonna be completed this year, hopefully?
Yes.
I know Stone will be happy to catch me every time.
Come, Roger. I speed by.
I'm not going.
They say if it's not, let us know, we will detour around that area.
It should be done, you know, before Christmas, I mean, it's, it's said to be all finished this, this fall.
We, um, also have bids closing at the same time for the asphalt overlay, they'll load North Allen Sunrise Circle.
Yes.
And is that a? So, we, we did, we timed it all at the same time, so that, that a contractor wanted to be on both of them. Um, also, back to the Randolph Road, they did say that, um, they expect that to be done probably late summer of next year, twenty nineteen. But it should be completed. Is that, is that what he?
I think it's, it's.
Like July.
Going out for bids like this winter, and should be able to be completed by, yeah, next summer.
Any others from public works?
Can we get the, the balls to go on the hour lines?
They're on, they're installed there.
For the, for the Harrison trip.
A few weeks ago, I think. Three weeks ago, maybe?
All right. Moving on to water and sewer department. There's activity reporting in the package. Matt, any, anyone highlight on that?
Could you just please stand up and make your presentation? This is Matt's first meeting as foreman.
Were you a little of a dress code?
Yeah.
His tux is in the clean.
Yeah, the dry cleaner wasn't open, I guess.
Shouldn't he bring his car in for the inquisition?
I agree.
Um, no, uh, nothing here, really, because I ain't done it.
We had another leak over there on Reed Street, just behind Reed Street. Which has been an issue because that's an odd sized main and it's also one that's really hard to get shut down. We've had a leak there before, so we're kind of looking into that. We're going to have to figure out a way to get that shut down a little bit better. That may be a spot. It's bigger than what our insert machine will do. So we may have to move back a little bit and maybe do a couple. Because I hate price. We can do a couple for what I, or look to see, have somebody come in and do it. It's almost fifteen thousand for a A bow. Come in, we can do.
What is that time?
It's trans, like, rough past two hundred and. They just don't like the chance, they really want you to tap it, get the thickness, dig a hole, tap it, get the thickness, send that to them with an O D measurement. And it's, and then it's two to three weeks for them to make the clamp to fit. And then have them come and do it, well, we get to do, we can do two eight inch somewhere. Still be cheaper by about four or five thousand dollars for, for them to do, so. We'll have to figure that out, that's on the agenda.
Any else have a question for activity report?
The, uh, meter jar at two thirty-one six, stop piggy. Did you replace that or was it just getting over or something?
Oh, yeah, it got ran over.
The clay tile.
And then, so we just ended up smashing the clay tile and put a new plastic jar in and.
Oh, okay.
Regrading it out, so that the lawnmower did not hit it anymore.
All right, thanks. Any, uh, any further questions for Congress? Anything for water? Anything for sewer?
Just inspected a couple of new tabs for the mid-construction. How's it going up? Uh, opposite of one on Switzer Street, it's been there and then on Lake Street, we're the only two that we had, so.
Thank you. You need other for water and sewer department? Thank you, Matt. Electric department. Sewer report. Jeff, anything you'd like to highlight on this?
Oh, we're just getting started on. Fifth day, I think, out in Southwest Country. Got our poles on the ground this week. And we probably drive a pole, get all overhead water in and just make our loop feed with it last. Happy night. Probably spend a lot of time out there pulling the tape drive. We repaired some stuff at the, the Tri- Gulf Social Club. Dump truck shouldn't have already been before you go, uh. Broke the pole off. And we're selling the pole, moving all our stuff. Just things like that mostly.
Are they responsible for those repair jobs? Any other questions or comments about the activity report?
Um, what about the activity report, Joel? I was being asked about the, the new meters or we're low, money low on the current meters that we use right now.
Well, I wouldn't say we're low, low. But we need to be getting something going on. Going to the A M I meters.
Right.
Because I'm, I can't get any more. Display boards, old transponders for my three page meters, I haven't got any of those. We haven't, go out, we just got to go manually read it. And. And that was my, that was my last batch of display boards. And I've got about sixty left. So, I mean, because building keeps going like it's going. We're going.
Yeah. Are we, uh, we, I guess, exploring the different options and all that stuff and?
We've had one being, we have another one, we have one we got to set up yet, the guy was by it or. Third. Off me and Matt about it. We don't come back at some point, we need to get back in touch with him, so, maybe, um, see if it's better.
All right. Well, thank you very much. We ready to move on? Uh, anything for generation and purchase?
We submitted our updated agreement with next era.
Distribution?
Uh, we had a tree that missed you. Only one day earlier Saturday.
I think it was a Sunday.
A Sunday, yeah. I mean, E circuit was off for that. Hour, hour and a half, tree limb broke, fell across the line, it was wet. Took the breaker to substation. Once every minute, break the limb, everything was good to go.
That's good. Quote for a new trencher? Continue packing.
Just getting ready to start that job out there and with the line between Denton and Sunset, Sunset Adams. Two runs through there that are kind of in the plans to go underground. We're kind of looking at an idea of getting a back, uh, trencher. And we went through the N J P A bids. And these were the two that came back. It's the same one, one has the backhoe attachment on it. Ditwitch is probably the most popular trencher out there. For mirrors, possible, but there's a dealership in Patton that has to actually go through St. Louis to get the parts. And St. Louis is slow with it. Mobley has a repair deal right there on sixty-three, right before we get in Mobley. It works on Ditwitch, when we had the trencher before, it worked, they did good work, no problem. So, called down, we got some bids and talked to Heather as far as savings from, uh, Digger Derek that they had. See if we could fit this in for this year. And with the backhoe attachment, which is the way we think we need to go. We can get a lot more versatility out of it. Uses many, uh, one job possibly and have the trencher going on another or maybe even both, but. It'd be, wouldn't that be hauling too many pieces of equipment to the same job site that way? Um, bid come in at sixty-nine thousand, seventy-one dollars and twenty-four cents. If you look above that, there's that tax included on that, which they forgot to take off. I called and verified that amount, which is almost three thousand dollars to come off that price. So, if you're good with that, this is kind of the way to be trying to go with this. Means, like I said, with the N J P A bids, so. It's a pretty simple process, actually, but we found with the backhoe, the trencher, uh, skid loader, so.
We saved about eighty-six thousand dollars over, from budget on the Digger Derek truck. So, even if we purchased, purchased this, we'd still have twenty thousand dollars left in that account.
Look, I, I see the sixty-nine thousand, but if you go down further in there, there's another bid in there for, uh, fifty-two thousand, what's that for?
That's without the backhoe attachment. I just, I bid it both ways because we were kind of debating a little bit and. Price wise, plus versatility, it'll have to be better off, make a trench and then turn around and dig for the transformer pads.
Right.
And do it all in one shot. So the total bid would be sixty-six thousand, three hundred and thirty-three, eighty and eighty-eight cents.
Sixty-six, three, three, three?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve the bid for sixty-six thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars?
I don't think we can actually approve it.
Oh, you don't want to approve it?
We can do it full board.
Okay.
But we can bring it back from August twenty. I know. I wasn't, I, I didn't know.
That's funny.
Yeah.
Thank you for that.
I think it'd be a good piece of work for, we'll make life a little easier on some of these type of spots for Jeff.
Well, that not to mention, I don't have the time on. On the, yeah. Compared with the main track though. Where you're digging everything, you don't leave that by a ditch. Or a two inch.
Is that all for electric department?
I have something I want to bring up. Uh, I was talking to Jeff the other day, we were talking about, uh, Southwest Country Estates and, uh, Jeff mentioned to me that, uh, the. Uh, city insurance guy had been in town and that, uh, he went around and, uh, they were looking at some of the, uh, city, uh. Well, like transformer, uh, or substations out there. And, uh, Jeff said that, uh, he looked at our new one, he looked at our old one, and he made the comment at the old one, he says. This thing is twenty-seven years old, he says, you need to start thinking about, uh, replacing this because in thirty years, uh, that's about the life of these, uh, substations. And so I asked him what the substation would, uh, replacement would cost, and he said about, what'd you say, one point six?
Well, I, you know.
Depends on what needs to be done.
I know what the new one cost, it was about one point five or six.
Okay.
Just for the transformer.
This is just like replacing parts or whatever?
I really don't know, I think I've never been in one of those deals, we, we put that new in a.
Oh eight?
Yeah, no, I know.
Oh eight or oh nine, I know it's right in there.
I know the payment we sent it on was in oh eight. But, um, we could only pay about fourteen thousand dollars a month on that lease payment for that substation.
So something we can just start looking ahead and get ready for when it happens?
Well, and I'd be curious to ask some questions on. Hey, we just left this transformer off. But then it comes to, I mean, you're going to have to have a portable sub. We can't feed all, the whole town off of that other transformer.
You can't?
That's what happens.
Stitching cords?
Yeah.
So, anyway, there's a rather substantial amount of money that we're going to have to come up with in the next few years to pay for this. So I'm kind of curious as to how much money we have in the reserve fund in the electric department and maybe we kind of shouldn't have lowered the rates, maybe? I don't know.
Well, that was just, I mean, an opinion, but I mean, it's something we can. Maybe we want to get the water thing taken care of and then jump on this, you know?
Well, but we need to start planning for it.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, that's not bad.
And that's why I was kind of curious as to what, you know, how much money there is in the reserve fund, whether this is something. We're going to be able to take out of reserves or whether we're going to have to go with a revenue bond for it or what we're going to have to do. We're going to have to start making some decisions and we start, better start planning for it.
We don't have one point five million in reserves.
Guess that'd be interesting. Talk to our, do we have an engineer for the electric department?
V H M G.
V H M G. Not that, not that the insurance man doesn't know what he's talking about, but he is an insurance.
Well, I, and I realize that too.
He's got a pretty good idea though.
But, but my guess is he does know, uh, these kinds of things, he may not know what it's going to cost for it. That could be more, what, but we, we do need to start looking at this again. If we don't have enough in the reserves, we either need to, uh, raise the rates or we're going to have to go out with, uh, a revenue bond for this, which will take a vote. There are going to have to be some decisions made on how we handle this, we don't know what we have to do with.
If it hadn't, if it hadn't been for the insurance guy, would we have known this? Or when would we have known this? When the lights went out?
Yeah. Because I, I really don't know, didn't know what the, and we were kind of talking about that over there because I knew that was twenty-seven years old. And he started talking and he brought up the fact that thirty years is probably a pretty good number. Very good life.
This is, this is definitely something that we're going to have to talk about, but we also need to look at this A M I system because. They're running out of meters that are, that they're going to be able to use. And we have to do something. The last quote that we got was almost half a million dollars for an A M I system. So, I feel it, obviously, we need to be looking at the tran, at the substation, but the A M I is going to end up being priority, I think. In the short term, but long term, we definitely need to be looking at that, so.
So for our next meeting, we have what's in our reserves and an option or two.
Sure.
Then, because Don's right, I mean, if we can raise rates a little bit right now and start putting some money building that reserves.
There's a three year warning, so that might.
Yeah, three year warning. Plus with A M I.
It could be five year.
I'm thinking we maybe have been given bad advice on reducing our rates, maybe we shouldn't have.
Well, that's why I said it's better.
So it'll be like a next year thing?
But I do say.
We need to start planning.
Yeah, I mean, because we may want to make a small change now in the rates and start building some money after. Chances are, we may not cover the one point five plus another half a million dollars with it, but if we can come up with a good chunk of it.
Well, the recommendation, the recommendation we had was to go with down five percent, we went two and a half, right?
Right, we increased it five and we went down two and a half.
Well, Jeff going, going L E D is going to help a little bit. Does it?
The fact that they don't work.
Two percent.
That's one way to save power is turn them off, right?
Turn them all off.
Why don't you turn them on every other night?
Well, then that might, this might be some, like, maybe the M P D R A could, you know?
Yeah.
You know? Because there's going to be a certain procedure and there's going to be certain money issues.
Lots of lights go out tonight.
I mean, I, I'm guessing that, uh, with the guy was talking about thirty years, that's kind of an average and, you know, it could be more than that, could be less than that. We're going to have to give them the air value to evaluate it, I'm sure.
Needless to say, for the electric department, we need two million dollars over the next couple of years, so I mean, we need to.
When you, when you perform annual maintenance and periodic maintenance on.
Well, I, I have oil tests done. They tested for methane and water, any kind of.
Right.
Something that shouldn't be there. And the last maintenance we had was on Burkhardt. And that was right after we got Wilson Street going.
That was a rather major one, wasn't it?
Yeah, the L T C had some gears broke off of those, where the load tab came through, keep sure. Molding it.
Right.
Circuit.
Yeah.
Molding. But that was in the wintertime when we, we run the whole town off of Welsa Street. And we had two circuits coming out of Welsa Street.
Right.
But if we don't have any meters, then we don't need any electric because we can.
You have some stations for me?
Yeah, yeah, you're right.
Maybe what we have in reserve and an estimate on how much one percent gives us, just so we have a, an idea, so we can buy with the number that way.
Thank you for that. Item seven. Item seven, report from Director of Public Works.
Well, this is one week's worth of stuff. That's all I was here, but. Not to say that I didn't do anything that one week, but I felt like I did more than that just today coming back after being gone a week, so. I'm kind of feeling my way through some of this as far as doing the setbacks and everything. The apartment heads have been really good about helping out and stuff. Jeff's having to help out quite a bit with the electric and picking up stuff. That's gonna be the area probably the weakest on. So, we're trying to work on that. Things looking down the road. They gave me lists on what they got jobs coming forward, so I can kind of stay with them on that. And try to work with the items that they're spending money on, kind of see what we got going there, but. Day to day, I can see a lot of running back and forth from them. They have to get a bike. I'll be in pretty good shape by the time I'm done, but. It's just some of the things we've done. There could be a lot more kind of with subdivision as it's going and stuff out there. We're getting more and stuff there. Don's out there today and we've seen a couple of things that we're gonna have to do and then trying to stay, avoid conflict with utilities on the others, so. Stuff I can kind of help. They were shorthanded forming concrete, so I helped out there with traffic and full trousings, so. Running help, I'll definitely do that.
In case anybody goes out to Glumby Street. The sewer line on Glumby Street is being extended and the storm sewer on Glumby Street is being installed. The rest of the storm sewer, street itself is not going in at this point, but the storm sewer is.
So, that's a good start on basic search right there, just to have that done.
Thank you, Mike. Any other? Any other ask, Mayor Rice?
Anybody else get a letter from Marty Penwick or an email? Okay, I got an email from her. It says, I'm writing to make you aware, if you are not already, that trash and nuisance charges is being violated at six oh nine South Problems. I've made several calls to the police department about this property, which is that store to me. Not sure what, if any pressure you can apply, but I sure like to see the violator gone. I'd say maybe to clean up the place, but the problem is ongoing. Trash gets brought in, disposed of, and more trash appears. Washing machines have been used as a burn barrel in the driveway, and according to my husband, the object is. Sleeping in the garage behind the unsightly arrangement of sheets, curtains, etc. She's trying to keep this, she's noticing all this, so I assume it's just been before us before.
Okay, I do know about this one.
Okay.
She has called multiple times. Sandy is dealing with it. My understanding is the department is working on the eviction to get him out. She has leave written citations to Mr. Wilson. The one bringing in junk. And she is correct about, it's pretty unsightly. I've been over there multiple times myself, so. It is being handled, but we can only move so fast. So, we're gonna have to rely on.
You know, on the same note, I noticed that a lot of people are starting to take advantage of the trash again. And I'm sure Danes haven't said a word, have they? You'll see four or five big items with the trash cans.
They're charged for each additional one?
Are they doing that?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, I guess.
Yeah, they, they keep a list and if you've got one on one big item, they'll mark it down.
So, they're.
They take pictures of some of them sometimes.
Okay, good. I could see some big piles of stuff.
Would you continue?
Household trash, bags of trash, there's no limit to that size.
No, I'm seeing like big things.
Couches, chairs.
Yeah, yeah, I'm seeing the whole living room out there. It used to be just one thing. I didn't want to change a burn barrel.
They, they'll pick it all up. It'll just get built for all of them that want it, so.
Yeah, I've seen the Danes build four and then it'll have the address and it'll say.
Good.
Five extra bulky items and they'll charge them, and then we take that list and we charge the customer every time, so. People are getting charged for it.
Are people upset about it?
You're getting a lot of calls from them.
Some are upset. They'll, they'll come in and say, what is this meat on my bill? And we'll be able to go in and call Danes. And they'll say, you had a couch and a let's eat out, extra bulk. They're very specific.
They, they list everything.
According to the census shows.
Yeah.
Just a reminder, we have an election tomorrow.
Yes.
We also have National Night Out tomorrow. If anyone is out and about downtown, come to National Night Out.
Any other ask, Mayor Rice?
Oh, I will bring up one other thing. We did, I have, the Chamber of Commerce had its wine bar on July twenty-eighth. We didn't do as well as what I hoped, but I think we did fairly well. We had a hundred and seventy-five people or so that attended on it. Several of the vendors that I talked to, the wineries, they said that we would probably about double that next year. I don't know. If we got over three hundred, I'd be extremely pleased next year. But all the businesses were very pleased with it. The wineries were pleased with it. As far as I know, there were zero problems, but everybody was thrilled with the way it worked. And it did seem to come off very smoothly. So, we're looking at, we've already scheduled the next one for next year. It will be the same weekend, last weekend in July.
Any other ask, Mayor Rice?
I did receive a call from Caleb Rainey today, Joel. Did an interview with him about things happening in Houston, Troy, but it's going to end much, so.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Have a motion? Any other second? Second to adjourn, all of you there, say aye.